Please see Kim over here. We have a little paper you need to fill out just for the record. So it just has your name and kind of what you would like to talk about, your phone number, just so we can have it on the record for us. So if you have that interest, please go see Kim. We'd like to recognize any scouts or any grade school kids that are here. I don't see any. We have lots of fun with them. We usually get the grade school kids to come up and sit on the stand with us. And it's, they find the candy drawer really fast. And so it's always a lot of fun to have them up here. I first need to, let's go for an invocation. Councilmember Crandall, would you mind giving us an invocation?
Our dear, kind Father in Heaven, we are so grateful to be here this evening and so grateful to be a part of this beautiful community where so many people are wonderful volunteers and help with the issues that we've had with the flooding the last month. And we are so grateful to be so blessed that we are able to still have property and to have limited amount of damage because of high waters. We are so grateful for the citizens who are joining us this evening, who are, that we are able to recognize them and the wonderful things that they do within our community. We ask that we might have a special blessing upon us this night, that as we discuss and make decisions, that we might be able to consider those around us and the viewpoints of all of our citizens. And again, we are grateful to be able to serve and to be here this evening. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, Councilmember Snellson will give our pledge.
Everybody please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, need an approval, a motion to approve the meeting's agenda as outlined.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Let's go to the ceremonial agenda, if that's okay. Oh, yes.
That was me, sorry.
Is Cassandra here to do the...? Okay, all right, sounds good. Well... We'll do that. That'd be great. That was actually next on the agenda, so that's perfect. That's perfect. Well, we'd like to recognize the CERT graduates that are here to receive their diploma. We sure appreciate all of them being here, and this is quite an honor. We like the Palmers. We're grateful for them to be here. So those, Lance, if you'd like to come up and maybe make an introduction, and then we'll do the graduation, so.
So I'll be joined by Joanna Larson, our Emergency Preparedness Manager. So here, we're here tonight to honor our CERT graduates. So CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team. So these are volunteers in the community who sign up for the program. They go through a fairly extensive training program. So they have online training, and they also meet in classes, five classes, and it all culminates in a very large-scale mock disaster. This year, we went up, teamed up with Linden CERT, and we did a disaster up there. We ran the scenario two times. There were in excess of forty people there, tons of volunteers that were the victims of the disaster. So what they learn in CERT is how to respond during an emergency, how to gather information, how to conduct searches, do some rescues. They learn about first aid. It's a great overall education to help them prepare individually for a disaster, but also gives them the skills and abilities to help the community in a disaster. CERT also has great opportunity to serve in other ways, too. Just recently, within the last two months, there was a house fire in Spanish Fork. The house was extensively damaged. They were looking for one of the victims of the fire who unfortunately was deceased, but they were searching for the remains. And they did a CERT call-out, and CERT volunteers responded. And with the help of CERT, the fire department was able to recover that victim. Also, we called, did a CERT call-out in order for flood preparations, and they helped with sandbagging here in Springville, too. So they're a tremendous resource, not only in a disaster and emergency, but for planned events, too. They typically help us every year during Art City Days as well. So they're an awesome organization. Each of them have worked hard to pass their CERT certification, and so we're more than happy to honor them tonight with their graduation.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, I was gonna mention, I saw them filling sandbags one afternoon. I'm sure they did it more than once, but anyway, yeah, great. You bet. We'll come down and we'll do it.
So if the mayor, when you read your name, if you can come up and accept your certificate, and then just line it behind you, and I'm sure they'll take the foil off.
Okay, we have Steve Cool. Okay. Lurik Cannon. That's okay. That's all right. We have Jill Gark. We can go up for a picture here. Man Mormon Cross, is that her? And Frank Pulsey. All right, Dale Harrison. Hey, a little bit of field. Hey, David Anderson. Larry Arnett.
This one is pretty special. In seventeen years that I've been in emergency, I've never had a lead chief go through the CERT program. And this is the first, so he brings his stuff.
Nice job.
Come on, yeah.
It's a wonderful organization, and we just appreciate all your tireless work. And I wasn't supposed to say this, but Lance had to take his final three times, so just so you know. But he passed, yes. Barely. Great. We, this is, this is some good stuff. We would like to turn the time over to the Art City Day rodeo royalty. So ladies, if you'd like to come up.
Hi, I'm Whitley Hat, and I attend school at Pace High School. I'm a freshman. I'm fifteen years old. I love to rodeo, and I am so glad I get to be here today. I love to shoot as well. I've competed in Nationals twice for shooting, and I absolutely love to rodeo. I've grown up on horses. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name's Shelby Eva. I'm your guys' first lieutenant this year. I, for my free time, I am a cheerleader at Tanek High School. I love to rodeo, horses, all that kind of stuff, and also rodeo queen. Thank you guys so much for having me, and I hope you guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Brown. I am twelve years old. I go, I go to Blackridge Elementary. I am in sixth grade. I ride a horse named Scooter. She's an Arabian, and I'm the princess of Art City Days rodeo.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sydney Nielsen. I'm currently fifteen years old, and I was a sophomore at Maple Mountain High School. I've been doing horses my whole life and love it, cherish the horse world and the livestock world. I've been showing FFA show pigs for two years now and love that. On behalf of the Art City Days Rodeo Committee and the Hovel Creek Riding Club Committee, we'd love for you guys to attend the Art City Days Rodeo on June 3rd, 2023.
Well, you weren't here in the meeting prior to this, but we talked about the rodeo and had quite a wonderful conversation about it. And I'm not sure if everybody, but I think most of us are gonna be down there, so we're very looking forward to it. And I would like to see some of the councilmen, and maybe even Liz, chase this squealing pig. Are you gonna have a...? Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you very much for coming. It's an honor for you to come here, and we really appreciate it. And we, Kami knows this, and those who are involved in it, we are very supportive of the rodeo and what it is down there. So thank you so much for representing them and representing our city, so thank you. Oh, wow. How nice. Thank you. Okay, we'll see you guys.
A week and a half. And not get paid for it.
I do.
That's why I said succulents. Is that what these are called? Succulents?
They are. Great. Thank you again for coming. We appreciate it. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Okay, thank you. All right, the next is a presentation approval of the resolution recognizing Constitutional Week. I think we had that presentation two weeks ago, and I think I gave you a chance to read what was sent to me as far as their resolution in relationship to it. Any questions about the resolution at all that they would like us to present? Okay. Is it appropriate, Kim, do we need to read it? Is that something we need to do? Okay, all right, well, I'll go ahead and do it. Whereas the city of Springville is a municipal corporation duly organized and existing under the laws of the state of Utah, whereas the city council is a legislative body of the city, whereas the city desires to comply with the passage of House Bill 179 sponsored by Representative Stratton and Senator Winterton during the 2023 legislative session, which declares the month of September as Founders and Constitution Month. Whereas the city desires to adopt the invitation in Section 1, Part 9b of House Bill 179 to provide the opportunity for all Utah schoolchildren to read from the Utah State, United States Constitution and other primary sources during the month of September. Whereas the city desires to recognize National Constitution Week, September 17th through the September 23rd, within Utah Founders and Constitution Month celebration. Whereas the city recognizes the 17th of September as the start date of Constitutional Week in recognition of the signing of the United States Constitution on September 17th, 1787, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Now, thou therefore be it resolved by the city council of Springville, Utah, that Section 1, the city hereby adopts the following policy in Section 1, Part 9b of House Bill 179, passed during the 2023 legislative session and declares September as Founders and Constitution Month. This resolution reserves the day during the Constitution Week for city schoolchildren to join with community leaders to read the Constitution at City Hall upon its passage. The time of the reading and the option to include an elementary reading and a secondary age, school age reading will be decided within thirty days of this resolution by working with the mayor's office. Section 3, the city will invite representatives from each school, city school, to join together at City Hall to read the Constitution. A live stream and replay feed will be shared and made available to all schools, classrooms, and city residents by using the city's existing recording protocol and the city's website to distribute the live stream and replay link. And Section 3, future reading dates will be determined by yearly resolution approved by the city council, passed and adopted by the city council on this date. So any questions about that? Okay, I'll enter a motion then for approval.
Okay. A motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-18, supporting Constitution Week in September, city, sorry, Week in Springville City, September 17th, '23.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any...
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, is it a roll call vote? Oh, thanks for catching me on that. Thank you. Ms. Liz?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Okay, thank you very much. They'll be very excited. I think that's a good opportunity for our kids. Okay, I need a motion then approval for the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Okay, John, I think we have a resolution. Oh, excuse me.
Public comment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. I'm moving right on. I got a number of them, too. Okay, we have four who would like to speak to the council, and we just ask you to spend, take three or four minutes, if you will. This isn't much of a dialogue. We just give you a chance to say what you'd like to say to the, to the city council. So we'll first start with Jonathan Bartholomew. He would like to talk with us in relationship to some property. So Jonathan?
Well, thank you, everyone. My name is Jonathan Bartholomew. I'm a Red Devil. Born and raised in Springville and live here in Springville and know many of you. We've chatted in the past. Anyway, I'm not sure what time this is coming up, but you know, the Bartholomew property. I love that, the reservoir and pond. I think a lot of us enjoy that area. The original farmhouse is still there, and my brother lives there, Nate Bartholomew. And he and his wife are really excited. He's born and raised here, Red Devil, too. And they'd love to build on that property, and they need a small parcel of land that I think the city owns to be able to make that possible. And I don't know if you've discussed it before or whatever, but I'm here to support that. I think it'd be good for him as a family. They want to live here, you know, the rest of their lives. And I think it'd benefit the city. I think there's been some agreement to purchase that small parcel. It's a tiny little part of like the driveway area. So anyway, I just support that, and I appreciate all you do. Thanks for your service. I don't know, there's not much of a dialogue, but anyway.
No, it's exactly, you did a perfect job. In fact, I was trying to hurry you to that. That was actually the next on the agenda, so.
Yeah, so I just support the purchase. I think it's a win for the family here in Springville and a win for the city because they'll pay for that. So thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, Glenn Bradley would like to speak with us in relationship to a water main repair on Spring Creek Drive. Spring Oaks Drive, excuse me.
Oh, yes. I love it on 1830 Spring Oaks Drive. Last October, the last three weeks of the year, you had some, a contractor come in and do a repair job on the water main. This was after the city had repaired the water line twice. Consequently, there's a couple of pretty good-sized sinkholes on a couple of the adjoining properties to us. What are you gonna do about it?
Well, this isn't a dialogue, so just tell us what, what your thoughts are. You're welcome to share whatever you would like to.
Now, did not the contractor have to have a performance bond on any collateral damage that was caused by his construction job? That is my question, I guess.
Well, I think probably the best thing to do then maybe is to have John, who's our attorney, spend a few moments with you if you'd like to, and maybe you can ask, you can address it now or you can do it privately if you'd like to. Tell me what you'd prefer to do.
This is something that we have been looking into. We have been talking to a number of property owners in that area. Brad Stapley, who's back here, has been a part of that in a huge way. He's our Public Works Director. And we can talk about it a little bit more, so that'd be good.
Do you wanna call me? Do you want me to sit here through the rest?
Well, if you give me your number, I can call you, and then you don't have to wait. Okay, then I can get it from her. Thanks so much.
And just so you know, it's good that you come, because we don't, we don't know about that.
We don't know about it, so you telling us, it helps us know what's going on so that we can help resolve some of these things. So thank you very much for doing it. You betcha. And if John isn't nice to you, let us know, would you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, as you drive up there, it kind of goes like this a little bit, so.
So see, we don't know that, because I don't drive up that way. Well, I was, I was only a block away from there, but I took 4th South up. Okay, thank you. All right. Steven, is it Park? Okay.
Steven Park. I live near the high school. Just bought the house on the corner of 3rd North and Main Street to convert to a bike shop. My son has been running a bike shop out of Snellson's basement, and it's been awesome. So I just wanted to recognize him for that. And so I just have a suggestion. Two things, a suggestion. It's a very small development project. I'm not a large developer, never done this before. And I, I know there are a lot of residential properties in the commercial zone that presumably there was an expectation that at some point they would convert to businesses. It's, it's a difficult process. I actually didn't know. I thought, oh, it's zone commercial. Just open up a bike shop. You know, do, you know, make the changes to the building, make it safe and all that. But I wasn't aware of a change of use thing. So the suggestion I have is, and I want to be clear upfront, not suggesting like a new city position, definitely not. But, because I don't think this happens often enough. But it would be, it would have been, I should also say upfront, the people I've worked with in the city building have been fantastic. Josh, I don't remember all their names, but Josh, Laura and Heather are the ones that I think I've talked to the most. But it would be great if there were some kind of recognition that someone who takes on a project like that probably isn't a large developer, probably doesn't have a lot of experience, and, and they're doing something to benefit the community. The city will benefit from increased taxes. They'll benefit from a, hopefully, a house that isn't an eyesore like some of the small houses turn into in commercial zones. But some kind of advocate in the, and not a new position, but just like a, I don't know what you'd call it, like a duty or an assignment. When someone does something like this, like, oh, we recognize what's about to happen and the trouble that you might run into, and that, and, and we are kind of partners in this, in a way. And so if there were just someone who, like, the first time I went into the city, you know, they're like, oh, you're doing this. You knew at it. Let me assign you to this person, and, and not a huge workload for them. It's just, you know, like, you have their direct number, and, and they kind of know your name so that when you give them a call, you know, you're not reminding them of what it is you're doing. Anyway, that's, so a suggestion. But all in all, my experience has been great. The, the trouble that I'm having isn't anyone's fault other than mine, it's just being ignorant of the process of, or the requirements of changing the use of a building. So it's been great. The other thing is also, I know this isn't a dialogue, and I don't really know. I'm going to mention this if there's something I can pursue to make it happen, but I'm not holding up, you know, what we're doing. We can't really. We want to get the building open as soon as possible. But the, so this is just specifically the curb design that I believe is, at least for this zone, consistent. So, so I'm putting in a curb, curb and gutter. And if the other building, if the, the person across the street also put in the curb and gutter, it's, it's like a residential curb and gutter. It's got the parking strip. And the problem is, once you, once you do that, the, first of all, it makes the property look residential still, which it's not, but also it makes the street narrower and just seems like it creates more hazards. And so what I would suggest is that, and there are lots of places, including across the street at Maverick, and I think it's like a Taco Bell or something, where the curb ties in or kind of pulls into the sidewalk and then goes down. So that if people choose to park in the street and go to the business, they're not, they're not constricting the traffic in the street. And also just visually, it tells people this is a commercial place rather than a residential place. So I suspect the, the process to get something like that approved is pretty long, and it's not something that we would delay our project for. But I do think it's worthwhile to consider that, just to keep the street safer and to support the idea that it's a commercial zone and should reflect that a little bit. That's it.
Wonderful, thank you. Now, just so we are clear, where's the property? Is it the Metcalf home? Is that the one that you're in? The one that's on?
I think it is the, I've seen that name listed down in the history of the property owners. So I think it was the Metcalf. It's like a red bungalow.
I was locked in that house for a little while as a five-year-old.
I have been...
That's another story, so.
I've been locked out of it a few times. I do have a map that shows right now the current types of gutters.
That would be helpful if you could give that to us. That would be super. And then that allows us to have a discussion at some other time in relationship to what you're talking about. And thank you very much. Yep, yep.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Not that he asked for it, but the bike shop is great. We've used it a bunch of times.
Good. Thank you.
Is, is, is there a way that we can take a look at this quickly and get this done, if it's possible, even possible to do?
Well, I, my, I mean, we can do anything, you can do anything you want, but my suggestion is for Josh and Brad to get together and to have a conversation, and then bring it maybe in two weeks to a work session where we can talk about it and say, yep, we like it, or no, we don't like it, and that way we can get an answer back fairly quickly. So I don't know. I know that they don't have anything else to do, but, but that's just, that's a suggestion. I don't know what the council would prefer doing, so.
Yeah, I think that, that's fine. I mean, I'm not talking about overnight, but.
Well, sure.
But what a normal process.
Okay, and we don't need a big presentation other than just to kind of...
Kick it around.
Yeah, kick it around and stuff. So maybe, Kim, you can help us put that on the agenda in a couple weeks and do that. Thank you. Okay, Shari Kilpak.
Ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentlemen, how are you tonight? It's funny to be on this side of the, the wall here. I'm usually on that side in Mapleton with the commission, but it's good to see you all.
Are we nice?
You are. You're doing a great job. I'm very impressed. It was great to see all of you, and John, you too. It was great to see all of you and John, you too. So I am Shari Kilpak. I own Territory Land Real Estate just down the street. And I actually uh came to a meeting with Josh this morning and it was very fortuitous that you guys happened to be meeting tonight. Because what we talked about that meeting was parking. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about parking and I have a tendency to talk, so just cut me off if and we can, I can come back next time if I need to finish it, I think. But we, I ended up buying the house, the H.T. Reynolds house uh just north of the church on Main Street. The big, beautiful brown Tudor. And I've got renters in there for now while we figure out what we're gonna do with it. And what I would like to do with it is a small event center. Like anniversary parties, small weddings, um corporate events, executive, executive retreats, something like that. I think it's just such, I don't know if you've been in it, but it's a gorgeous home with tons of beautiful quarters on oak floors throughout the whole thing and lots of the beautiful charm is still there. It's got a uh gorgeous fireplace with, I can't think of the name of the guy that designed it, but anyway, it's just a beautiful home and it needs to be used for what the highest and best use. And that's the best thing that I can come up with and I am open for consideration uh for considering any other options you guys have. But I think that that would be a really great use for it. And what the problem is, is I've got a half acre. As you can probably picture in your minds, there's a nice big vacant area behind it that goes to the west.
Is that part of your property to the west where the garden was?
There's a, it doesn't go all the way north. There's a vacant piece behind the next door guy too. I can't think of his name. Um but anyway, mine goes straight back and it's a half acre. And Josh and I figured that we would need about twelve spaces for the amount of square footage that would be usable on that house, parking spaces. Well, if you turn that back into a parking lot, it's almost just unnecessary and it just creates a parking lot back there. It would, I would like, the reason I'm here tonight, long story short, we need to address the CC parking zone, parking, the parking in the CC zone. We need to address that so that we are not required to do parking lots on a use like this where it's unnecessary because we actually calculated and we probably have about fifteen to twenty parking spots on the street between on the south side of the house, across the street by the church, and in front of the house on Main Street. There's tons of parking, so for me to have to turn that back piece into a parking lot, number one, would be cost prohibitive. I pro- I don't, I don't know that I can make the numbers work if I have to put that much money into asphalt and curb and gutter and drainage and all of that. Along with I need to update the power and blah, blah, blah. And I know this is not your problem, but what I would love to do with the property is make Main Street better. We're doing this reframing downtown project right now and this could go right along with that. I just got back from DC for meetings, for real estate meetings there. And I went to Alexandria. I don't know if any of you have been there. It is beautiful. And everyone is out walking, everyone's riding bikes. It's so charming. Of course, we don't have the Potomac, but we have Hubble Creek. And why don't we make that into something and put some benches along and enjoy that water feature that we have going through our city? And I would love to see some bikes. So you know those bikes you pay and you gotta dock them when you're done? They're just scattered throughout all the towns back there and a lot of places have them now. And in order to get this place to a walkable, connective, you know, place where people are drawn to the downtown, we need that instead of parking lots so that we can actually park on the outskirts, grab a bike, hop on, drive downtown, go see what we want. And I think it's gonna create the atmosphere that we want here and make it beautiful and a destination and somewhere where people can come and enjoy their evenings or their days with their kids or whatever. So I would ask that you would, I I'll get with Josh and I don't know what I need to do, but I'm ready to head this up and and make this a part of the reframing downtown because I think it will, I think we're missing the boat if we overlook parking and just focus on par- we need more parking, we need more parking, we need more parking. I mean, we we do, we need more parking, but not right on downtown and let's not have any more parking lots because we see what Allen's, the old Allen's looks like. We don't want another Smith's parking lot. We don't need parking lots. We need walkability and 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 the ways to make that happen. Is that too long?
Nope, it's perfect.
Sorry, okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Yep, and your comment was correct. Just work with Josh.
Yes, I'll work with Josh and you'll, and I'll be back then.
You can come back. You know, every time, every two weeks, you can come back.
I'll do, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, right?
No, we we appreciate you taking the time to be here. We really do, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think he just said he just was talking about the reframing with you in the work session.
Correct, that's correct.
So is that a part of anything, of any discussion?
It is a study that's going on right now. There's discussion right now.
It's also what what you've talked about in in terms of the biking and the walking and so forth is part of the active transportation plan that we that we've been working on for several years, so.
Well, we need to kick that in the butt.
We do.
Get it done.
I can show you what's happening with Hubble Creek just off Main Street too.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so there's some, I didn't know there was anything in the works for this. That's wonderful. Okay, well, thanks for your time and I do appreciate your service too. And I love Springville and I am so happy to see Big Al Day.
Yeah.
It's so awesome. I'm gonna be there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, John, I think we're on now, sorry.
Thank you, uh mayor, uh council members. Uh this item has already been brought up tonight. What we're talking about is property uh there at the Barthol- Bartholomew Park. Uh we're talking, so this uh as you can see before you is Bartholomew Park. The property that's at issue is just uh west of Bartholomew Park uh and to the north. And uh it's owned by Nate and his wife. And what we're looking at doing is, as you see this blue line, this blue line's currently the fence. Uh the green line uh is the park uh boundary along with this blue. It's kind of an overlapped uh two different lines there for some reason on this map. Uh and uh the Bartholomews came to us, it's actually been several years, I don't know how many years. Two and a half years, their county and I apologize. It has taken a while to get to this point. Uh it's taken a while to get surveyors involved in a few things like that. And then also uh trying to to figure out what's the best resolution to this. There's really two different parts of this property that we're talking about. So again, the issue uh tonight is whether the the city be willing to uh sell the property to the Bartholomews. Um but there's two different uh stories behind the the property. Uh first, on the south portion of the property right here, we're talking roughly twenty-three hundred square feet. Uh this property has been on uh the west side of that fence line going back to the nineteen sixties plus. Where I went and I looked at some aerial photos and that fence line's been there for a long, long time. Uh the two different.
Fence line where the blue is or?
Where the blue is from about uh this location heading south.
Okay.
Uh this side was owned by Wayne Bartholomew and his brother, I apologize, Eldon. I thought it was Eldon, but I wasn't quite sure. Um Eldon owned on the the west side uh right here. And so as you look at this lower half, uh this probably would meet the what the doctrine which is called boundary by acquiescence. And that is where you set up uh uh some kind of line between property. The property owners recognize that line such as a fence and then each property owner takes care of the property up to the fence line for a period of at least twenty years. Now, when the city owns property, you cannot use boundary by acquiescence. However, I think this property would have changed hands by boundary by acquiescence prior to the city owning the property. And so you you look at it, uh there's probably a good uh forty, maybe even fifty years where two private property owners recognize this as as the boundary line. And so uh what's before you is that there wouldn't be an amount tied to the southern portion, but there would be an amount tied to the northern portion. And historically, if I understand correctly and as I look at pictures, it it looks to be the case that this portion here was actually shared by both property owners, but it was in Wayne's name. And that's uh property that the city purchased uh from Wayne Bartholomew uh back, I believe, around two thousand and six. And so this portion up here is roughly three thousand square feet, just a little bit less. The total amount is tw- uh two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six square feet. Uh and uh the price that's before you tonight is six dollars and sixty-eight uh per square foot for a total of nineteen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. Now, where we got to with the six dollars and uh sixty-eight cents is we have had other uh properties appraised, uh raw properties. Uh and we have uh basically based that on those appraisals and so it is within the fair market amount. Any questions for me?
Isn't there the, isn't there a fence there right now?
There is. Uh so uh Director Royland is the one that uh was the project manager over this park. And I assume he put this in the fence down here just based upon where the old fence was.
And it's a nice fence though. I mean, it's a rather, or isn't it an uh iron fence? Oh, this isn't a nice fence then?
No, it's just a.
Okay, chain link, okay.
Yeah, and then up here, I don't know uh why the fence is where it was because I don't believe there was a fence when we purchased it because you had uh all the the Wayne Bartholomew property uh structures over here. So uh but for some reason, that's where he put the fence. And then it's already been brought up, what this allows uh Nate and his uh wife to do is, or the property owners, is there's a home here. You can see that back here you have some older uh agricultural farm uh structures. But then they would have the ability to put a a home back in this location. So.
Okay, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'd, I was just gonna comment. I walked up there and walked around just to see and I I I can't see why we wouldn't do it. I can't even, it's already fenced in. We assumed they're asking for the way it is right now, the way we are claiming it, so to speak, by our own fence. So I think I'd, I can't even begin to see why we wouldn't just do it. It doesn't hurt the park one bit.
Not at all.
To do that.
Okay, other questions for John while he's in front of us?
I'm thinking it'd cost money to move the fence, so yeah, I'm with Chris. Yeah. Why, why mess with it?
I can't see a use for the city in that much property.
Okay, I'm open for a motion then.
Can I, can I just make sure Stacy? You don't have any issue with this, do you?
That's a good point.
Oh, dog park, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two-three dash sixteen. Been approved signing a quick claim, we did claim, I'm gonna have to do both of them, I guess, to Nathaniel and Christie Lee Bartholomew for the property in Bartholomew Park area.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, as a roll call vote, Craig?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Did I step on your toes on that ride? Was, were you gonna make the resolution and I?
Me?
No, I I.
Oh.
Craig, I thought, no, no, I was just being funny. I was, it was very irreverent. It was very irreverent.
Oh, it was the dog park.
Don't say it again.
Hey, John, I think you're on now for the um DR Assumption LLC.
Uh yes, uh mayor, council members, uh before we get to this one, I just uh also like to state that uh the Bartholomews have been great neighbors to that park. Uh and so uh it's, hopefully, we're helping you guys out too and I know it gets loud, but uh hopefully i- it's a situation that uh both parties are enjoying there, so thank you.
I don't know. I could be wrong. I'm sure you you'll correct me real quick. But I don't know of a Bartholomew that isn't a great person, so we're just really, yeah. I mean, I I've been around your families and for a long time and uh I just hide a, ha- keep him in very high regard, so. So thank you. Okay, John?
Uh so mayor, uh city council, this item is dealing with a property off of fifty-one. So the road you see here is State Route fifty-one. Springville is up on the kind of the north eastern portion of uh this uh property. If you were to take the road heading north and then down, you got Spanish Fork down this way. And so this is uh the DR Construction or Assumption Construction LLC property. Uh they have come through and they've developed a little bit of the property. If you recall, this is the property uh that the ordinance was changed for so it would allow some uh storage of materials and other such things. And that was about, I believe, two, three years ago. And so they're coming back through. Right now, as you drive past the property, you see a building in this location as you're heading to to Spanish Fork. And so that has triggered a number of different items with the site plan. Uh some of those items uh that it's triggered is when you come through with the site plan, uh you would need to put in a curb and gutter, which they have, but you also need to put in sidewalk and a few things like that, which they don't have. Uh there's also some sewer improvements, some pressurized irrigation improvements. And then uh on this property, there's an upsizing to a water line that's supposed to take place. Now, if you look at where the property is in relationship to where the nearest sewer is, uh you're looking about two thousand uh feet, uh it's a ways away. Um and also the nearest uh place where there is curb gutter um is about two thousand uh feet away too. It's with the storage units uh that's almost uh to the T-bone as you head north. And so they're a ways away from a lot of the infrastructure that normally is put in as part of a site plan. Um the other one that's uh a ways away is pressurized irrigation. And it's hard to see, but this purple line right here, some pressurized irrigation and then pressurized irrigation over in this location. Uh to get to this line, uh it's about forty-six hundred uh linear feet uh to get there. And so those items are a ways away and so in talking with the engineers uh and discussing uh this, uh one of the ideas that came up was instead of, for instance, putting a sewer line in and possibly missing grade, which I I think that uh with the engineers we have and uh with the engineering that's uh out there, you could probably hit the grade, but there's still a possibility you could miss it. Also too, putting the pressurized irrigation in at this time without it being very close, uh that uh it's just that we don't know when the pressurized irrigation's gonna get down there and a few things. So what the agreement does, it would allow a deferral of putting in the pressurized irrigation, the sewer line, and then upsizing the water line. Right now, uh on fifty-one, the water line's an eight-inch water line. As part of a commercial development, they're required to upsize it to a ten-inch. And then as part of our master plan, we require in a twelve-inch, so we'd pay a little bit of those costs uh to to service the new development. And so again, uh the agreement would allow them to defer putting these in until uh one of uh four different uh triggering uh events. One would be that the city just says, hey, it's time for you to put the these improvements in. Uh then they would have to start putting the improvements in uh within ninety days. Uh whether the, if the abutting properties start putting the improvements in, then they would have to do it as well. If uh the city wanted to put a special improvement district down here, as part of this agreement, they waive the ability to protest that special improvement district so they'd be a part of it. And then also too, if uh if for some reason uh the city comes down and just puts in the improvements, then they would pay for those improvements. So those are the four different ways that they would participate in putting the improvements in. So any questions? Now, there is a risk to this because typically when a development comes in, they put everything in at that time. Um and there's, it's done. Yeah, with this agreement, uh what you're looking at is it might not go in for five, ten years or so. And at that time, uh whoever owns the property might uh try to contest the agreement and a few things like that. So it's not as as solid as just saying, hey, go put the improvements in right now.
So to that point, John, is there a way in the agreement? Because I I personally have great trust in assumptions. I mean, if assumptions say they're gonna do it, they'll do it. But if we said that if the property changes hands, that there has to be some sort of a escrow or some money set aside for the s- during the sale of it to do those improvements at whatever time it does take place? I'm just thinking.
I I think that's very doable. I I don't think that's a a tough one at all.
That way you get past somebody buying it and then having the city go to him and say, oh, by the way, now you need to put it in. Oh, I didn't know. When they knew, I mean, it could just alleviate all those problems.
Nope, I I like that. That's something I think we definitely can add.
So, John, do the other properties have sewer and and water to them and irrigation that are north between the assumption property and where the?
No, as you can see this green line, this is the closest sewer connection or mate sewer main uh to the property.
So none of the other buildings have sewer?
Are they just on septic?
They're all on septic.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of this development. And a lot of this development happened decades ago, so.
When Phil Whitney, or Phil Whitney, Phil Hanson put his in, what'd we end up doing there? Because that's a fairly recent one, isn't it? I don't think he has sidewalk or anything out front of his.
I, no, he doesn't.
Yeah.
He doesn't, but I don't recall, I, I think he might have, that might have went in before my time, I don't know when it went in.
Can't remember when that one went in, it seemed fair. I used to remember it down here, and then all of a sudden he was out there.
Yeah, so it's been a little over two decades.
Was it really late nineties? Wow.
It has been last ninety-two.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yep, yep.
All right, I'm just curious, because I was just thinking back to when we had citizens that came in and said things, and was just like, let me, and he's the most recent development out there, I think, so, cool.
Yeah, that is correct.
Uh, John, just, there are some people along there that are not happy at all with that property, with what it's doing. They contest it, I, I think that, the, I don't, I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly, but you said storing materials there, but they're actually crushing asphalt there.
They, they do have the ability to crush asphalt and to crush concrete.
Yeah.
Um, I think though, the, the issue is not necessarily their property, there's some property in this area that's doing that, and our code enforcement officer and our planning department are trying to remedy that.
Well, it's been going on for two years. And, and so that's, that's the thing I'm saying, is that for those people that already are not happy with what's going on there, and they, and it is on their property somewhere, and I love them too, that's not the point. But I, but how do we tell these other people? I guess, I've, I've heard, we're not asking them to do anything that we haven't asked anybody else, or, that's the one thing. But it will look like, because not what you said, there haven't been people coming along asking for this. So I, I just worry about that a little bit, that these same people that are not happy find out now, oh, and you didn't even make them do what you're supposed to do.
That, I think you have a point there. One of the things with the ordinance that the assumption property's operating underneath is that they can crush, they can do both asphalt and concrete, but they have to be so far away from the property line, that the sound of it has to be a certain decibel, and they're not supposed to have any dust leave the property.
And that's the part that they're unhappy with, because the dust is going.
And if it's coming from their property, then we can go out there and cite them for that. But I, I also too, as has been mentioned, there's some other property out there that is doing it illegally, and we just need to.
Why, why are we letting them do it?
I, I don't know, I'd have to follow up with our code enforcement.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot with that, but I think, I think we ought to those people that have houses there and businesses there to enforce it, because it's, it's a hazardous material.
Yeah, well, and also too, on, on the assumption property, they need to make sure no dust comes off their property as well, I agree.
The, the business came, some of you were here, came and wanted to get approval, and we turned them down, and it sounds like they're just going about doing it anyway.
Yeah, and I don't know the full situation, I've, I've just heard through our code enforcement officer, there's some things going on down there. And, and one of the problems is, is you have to have a property big enough, because I believe it's about six hundred feet. I'd have to go look away from other properties to do it.
I just, I feel bad for those people that are, you know, they're upset with the city because we just let it happen.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and I'll follow up with it.
Okay, you have a presentation, what would you like to do? Questions for John? Okay?
A motion to approve, can I, can we just, are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
I am.
All right.
If you want to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen that approves an agreement with D R Assumption Construction LLC that require improvements to be installed at a later date. Now, can we add that that adds to future owner?
Yes.
Just, whatever it needs, I would like my motion to include that that follows ownership.
Yeah, the resolution allows for corrections to the agreement, so.
Love it, that's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is this your first presentation here?
Second.
Oh, okay, I didn't remember.
This one's a little bit better than the first one.
I don't remember the first one, so, sorry.
Both had to do with bonds, but the, this one, we're not gonna request the forfeit of a bond, we're just gonna request to extend it. Mayor and Council, I'm Chris Wilson, Chief Engineer, just a quick correction on the agenda. Jeff Anderson's still our city engineer. Sorry. Okay, tonight I would like to talk about the Hubble Creek Industrial Subdivision Project. It is, there we go. The Hubble Creek Industrial Project Commercial Subdivision, also known as High Electric in the beginning, located at seventeen fifty west, one thousand north, highlighted area you can see there. It's a six-lot commercial subdivision. This project was approved by Planning Commission in November of twenty twenty-one, and plat was recorded in June of twenty twenty. So we're approaching the, a year mark on this project. The, we're talking about the improvement bond, so I'm gonna kind of cover a little bit of what's been done and what's still to be completed with the project. About ninety percent of seventeen fifty north improvements have been completed, as you can see in the green. The one thousand north and sixteen fifty north improvements are pending completion. The incomplete improvements include relocation of power lines, storm drain, water, pressure irrigation, and street surface improvements. The, this presentation is to request consideration of the improvement bond extension. Currently, the developer has a cash bond that's held by the city for, that would cover all the public improvements. Per, per City Code Title fourteen dash five dash one oh one, reads that once they've received final approval or recorded a plat, they have one year to complete these improvements. And at the discretion of the City Council, we can grant up to a twelve-month extension to complete these. The developer is here, Mr. Eugene, and he's requesting an extension of those due to constraints with weather with this winter and just not being able to get, get everything done. It's pretty wet over there right now currently. There's an artesian well on site that's, they've been unable to cap, and there's also been backup of the flooding of Hubble Creek into their basin that's held them up from getting some of those improvements done and stabilization done. So staff recommends an extension of this to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which should give adequate time to finish those improvements and allow them to get, the last improvement's gonna be their surface, the asphalt, which should get them in time for, before the weather turns, and, and then they have to wait through another winter before they can wrap things up. That's, that's the summary of that, my presentation, and just for your consideration to approve the, this extension.
Okay, questions for Chris?
Is that your recommendation?
Uh, yeah, based on, on the, the weather we've had, the amount of improvements that they have, they've been moving forward with their project, and that's the staff's recommendation to give them some more time to, to get those done.
So, so they have been under construction, those buildings are up, right?
Correct.
But they just haven't been able to get the improvements along the perimeter done?
Yeah, so they've been moving forward on the buildings, but like I said, with the winter and the water on site, they haven't been able to get into, both one thousand north and six fifty north have the barrier of this artesian well that's been an issue. So they've been trying to get it to dry out, and with the winter being long and, and now wet, it's, it's been hard for them to get those done.
So, I, I know that that's been wetlands down there before specifically because of that artesian well, I'm very familiar with the property. Is that, are they gonna be able to mitigate that? I mean, it's been wet down there forever.
Yes, so they haven't been able to cap the, and stop the flows, so they've, they've been in contact with the Division of Water Rights, and they've got basically two options. They can either amend their site plan, and, well, the lot that that's located on, I believe is still, still hasn't been through a site plan process, so they can look at leaving a pond of some sort and aerate it and do something with it, or the Division of Water Rights has allowed them to send it to an open body, open waters of the US, somehow conveying through a pipeline or some sort, as long as the city buys off on what mode that, that is transferred by.
So there, there has been Army Corps of Engineers that have been involved in that property. What do they say about that, the wetlands down there?
Uh, I, I've only seen letters from the Division of Water Rights regarding, and it may have even been from the Army Corps of Engineer, now that you say it, that has recommended that it, basically, they, they're agreeing that they, that it's, the damage is too far on the artesian well that they can't cap it. And so they'll, it'll have to be conveyed somehow, somewhere else.
Yeah, go ahead, please come up, yep.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I apologize, English being a second language. I, I can shed, shed some light, perhaps? So the main reason we're requesting extension on the bond is because there are three major streets that are going around the project, and we could not possibly work on, on all the streets in the same time. Plus, we did not have the design on sixteen fifty west done till approximately a month and a half ago. There were multiple things that did not match what we had in the drawings. And with the, the heaviest winter on record in the last eighty years, we had to go and pick our battles, so do one street, close it, get it done, get, open it, move to another street, close that, et cetera, et cetera. So regarding the, the artesian well, we, I contacted the state, and forgive me, perhaps not the correct expression, water manager, well manager. So I contacted them with a, with a question, okay, how should we handle this? We tried with, with the excavating contractor, we tried with the well people to multiple different ways. We tried to abandon it according to the state procedure, we tried to go and cap it, we tried, okay, several different ways, and we can see that it's been tried during the years, there's multitudes of concrete that were done, and et cetera, et cetera. So the state allowed us to go and have the water be, be put into, into an open body. As you mentioned, Army Corps of Engineer had a study done prior to me purchasing the property, and that study shows up, there are no wetlands on the property. There, there hasn't been standing water, and the water that's been out there was mostly because of the trench that was previously open, now it's all sealed in, in a pipe on the north side. So there was also four irrigation trenches on the south side, which are, are to be, now to be captured in into a storm drain pipe, which we will do once when we can go and open one thousand north. We found that there is electrical lines that are right below the storm drain, so those are things we need to go and address. So regarding the artesian well, it is part of Lot Six, which is, there's no plan to be developed, you know, next, at least in a year, perhaps more. What the state said is that as long as that water is put, that's not, not used for.
Any use?
For, there, there is no any use of it, no, no beneficial use, I think is what they said, then that, that they were okay with that water going either in the storm drain system or going into an open, open area. I contacted the civil engineers, and I asked them to, ask the city, what recommendation would, would the city, would the city make, or would, if they would have accept? And we were told that it would be acceptable to the city to go and have the, the excess artesian water go into the storm drain system, as that is all tying into our retention pond. So we had a calculation done with the civil engineer, that is, the storm drain pipes that are gonna be installed in one thousand north, which is in ten feet away perhaps, okay, from the artesian well, they are gonna handle the flow even, you know, in a excessive year as we have had. And that is the, the plan currently. Now, we had a meeting, and we also discussed that if that's not acceptable, we can perhaps use it as, as a water feature and aerate, the water, make sure there's no stagnant, as there are multiple parks in the immediate vicinity of Hubble Creek Business Park that have the same, the same approach. In both ways, you know, we discussed, once when Lot Number Six is open for development, then we can go and choose which one of those two ways. I'd rather solve it earlier than later, but the reason for the bond extension again is we can only do one thing at a time out there, and with the heaviest winter on record, it's been, it's been slower than, than I would like. So that's, that's all I have, if anything else, I can answer any questions.
I, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with a bond extension, but is there any risk to the city of this development with that water there, John, is there?
There, there is not. Before this, and I, I believe Chris joined us after, meaning coming to the city after this was approved, but they, Jeff Anderson and his group made sure that all water or wetlands requirements were followed and everything else. So it was kind of interesting, because wetland delineations are only good for so long, and we, we've been finding over the past few years that where there was wetlands, now they're delineating, there's not wetlands. So we've followed everything, we've got all the requirements through the Army Corps, all those type of things, and I believe that's what happened with this development. I remember what I was going through, because a lot of us were surprised when we saw the delineations come in. But we have relied on experts and everything else for it, so there is no risk to us.
And to follow up on that, I mean, the risk would be if we didn't extend it, and then we did recall their bond, that we would be the ones that end up fixing it, not them, correct?
On the bond issue, yes.
Yeah, if we pulled their bond money, then it's like, oh, we're gonna take the money and fix it ourselves. I'm all about letting them fix it.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's why I say I'm fine with it.
Yeah, now with this wet winter, it's probably gonna go back to more deline, wetland delineations, so, it's just interesting.
My, my concern is just that, that the developer, and please don't take offense at this comment, but that the developer comes back to the city and says, you allowed us to do this, and you knew very well that there was, we had wetland problems there.
No, on this one, there was delineations done, and we based things on delineations. Now technically, with the Army Corps, it's not our responsibility to catch the wetlands for the developer, so if the Army Corps came and said, hey, you build on wetlands, it's really the developer that's on the hook for that, not the city.
Then they gotta, gotta go back to the Army Corps and deal with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, then, I'm fine with it then.
Okay, other questions for them? You have a question?
I think we're okay, I'm okay.
You sure you wanna ask a question, you're welcome to.
It was just a wonder.
Okay.
It's okay, it was just, I was just, well, okay, I was, well, I was just questioning the, the experts when we, when we have lived here and know that there has been, that it was wetlands down there, it's just, I guess, to our benefit that we refer to, is it the Army Corps of Engineers and that decide what the wetlands are for our city?
So the way that it works is there's a wetland specialist, they go and do a delineation, and then they submit that to the Army Corps, and then they check to make sure the delineation is correct, and then they issue a, a letter saying, yes, this is where the wetlands are or where they are not, and they give a delineation letter from the Corps.
Yeah, that whole situation is just a wonder. But, it's just a wonder to me, but that.
Yes.
I mean, if it's acceptable to everybody else, then.
It is, and that's all we really have.
And we're not held responsible for that.
And that's really the only mechanism we have for wetlands. And again, it's not necessarily, if, if somebody builds on a wetland, it's not the city that gets in trouble with penalties and all that, it's the developer.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, it's nice not to be concerned.
I have a question. There's, I know that we, like, Stoffers is on, has been on, I can assume it still is, secondary water, we've really got a lot of that down there. If this is a continually flowing artesian well, has it been looked at, the ability to use it as a secondary system for either your properties, or it's not that far back to the city park? I just wondered if that's been looked at, and, because we have, we have lift stations there for sewer, why couldn't we have a lift station from that to the park and, and water it? I just don't know.
I, I wouldn't say it's, it's not an option, but the. I, I wouldn't say it's, it's, it's not an option, but that, well, nobody's looked into that so far. It would take a lot, a lot of study and, and effort to look into that, that, the, it would also require transfer of water rights to that source. Uh, it, it's pretty.
Well, who, yeah, the, the, aren't the water rights with the owner of the property?
No.
Yeah, with the city.
No, there's, there's a number of artesian wells, uh, throughout the west fields that are owned by people that don't.
Then why aren't they responsible for that?
Well, the way it works, and I think it was mentioned, is if there's no beneficial use within seven years, then technically those people could lose their water rights through the state. And I think that's kinda what it sounds like the state might be saying about this one.
So the state, uh, you are correct, okay, if I understood, if I understood what you said, the state directed that there would be no beneficial use. Now, if I'm not mistaken, we transferred the water rights to the city, uh, as, as part of the application process originally. Um, if, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, again, uh, the bond that we're discussing here, it's.
Now, the bond, yeah.
This is, we tried in fifteen different ways, we, uh, to go and abandon, abandon the well. Um, and we tried also measure the flow, okay, with, uh, when I say we, it's like contracted well people that are professional on this, to, to try to see what are we dealing with, whether it's actual artesian well, whether it's a pipe that was broken previously. There's, there's a cast pipe that's been out there for what looks like probably go forty years plus. So, um, there is, even in the excess, excess, uh, water here that we have had, it does not go beyond, okay, a foot and a half above where it is right now. And it is currently sitting in six foot below depression where the rest of the project was set. So that will end up being either a, a natural pond, if you rather, or it's gonna get, it's gonna get buried out. So those are the, the, the logical ways.
Yeah, I think we just kinda let you keep working on that. Sounds like you got, you got your hands full on that one. Welcome to Springville. We have lots of artesian wells everywhere in town.
If I can just, uh, we're discussing, uh, just a joke aside, uh, we wanna make a proposition to the, to the city. Um, we're gonna make an advertisement, it's visible from I fifteen. Uh, we'll just install a, we'll install a boat ramp, okay, to Hubble Creek. It'll work just fine, okay?
Yeah.
We'll be fighting from going over one thousand west, uh, one thousand north. So, uh, again, thank you for, thank you for, for everything.
Thank you. We like your humor. Okay, uh, back to the, uh, extension of the bond. Other questions for Chris? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was gonna say, I'll make a motion if, if everybody's ready for it. I'll motion to approve the extension of improvement bonding for the Hubble Creek Industrial Commercial Development to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, that's a, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was some real money.
Okay, Sean? And, and I think to your point, I think we understand, but if there's something else that we can add, but I'll just turn it over to you, so I don't wanna.
Well.
I'm not trying to cut you off at all, but.
No, you can cut me off, cause, uh, so I didn't know if you, I, I have a presentation, but we've gone over a lot of things many times. And, um, you, I think you all understand what we're trying to do and you've seen the power prices and, and how we're trying to insulate the city from those. And, um, upgrade, uh, get things that are, that are new or so that the plant can, can keep going, providing service to the city. Um, so, uh, we just, we, we've gone over the contract really well with Wheeler Machinery as far as, uh, all the items. Uh, we've done walkarounds three times, have gone through the list. And so we feel really good about, um, what we're getting on that. And then, um, we, we, we made sure that the prices were good, that they were giving us as well. So, um, we feel good about recommending to, uh, to have, have them buy three engines and to do the upgrades to some of the exhaust systems there in the Whitehead Plant. Um, and the Power Board recommended it too. They've been, I think they think I'm in app, cause it's taken a lot of years to get to this point, so. Uh, yeah, I don't know, is there any questions?
So just for the heck of it, review the numbers. So, I mean, we're basically looking at twelve million. You know, earlier today, we talked a little bit about budget and then we were two million short in that.
Uh huh.
This twelve million, that's not just for the engines, that's the whole project, or is that just for the engines?
That's the whole project.
Okay, cause it was written, the way it's written, it kinda like, oh, that's just for the engines, it's like, no, no, this is the whole project.
The contract is attached and then it's got a bunch of exhibits and it's everything involved in that. Um, there's only one thing left out and that's some controls. And Lehigh has them, they're renting, they're, they're actually renting switchgear and doing some other things. So we have to go barter with them and see what we can get from them. They have about a hundred thousand dollars into those controls from what I've heard, so we gotta go lowball them and try and get them. Cause they don't have a use for them elsewhere, because they're, the, from the factory, they're in, integral with the switchgear. And so they have them all separated, they're renting stuff, trying to get through the summer and they've gotten engines from this same set. They've got three, um, already on the ground and they're getting them in for this June. But they're spending a lot of money doing some temporary stuff to try and have protection through the summer.
Sean, this is just some, just semantics on the motion. I, 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 it just says that it's to install this. Shouldn't it say purchase and install, or does it mean the same?
Um, maybe I should have written it better.
No, I'm just wondering if that makes any difference.
Uh.
You can amend your motion, the motion.
Yeah, you could say purchase and install. Because it, there's, uh, there's a few other components with it, two exhaust components and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, but that'd be part of the installation, but.
Yeah.
It's just to purchase the generators.
Uh huh.
Probably needs to be delineated, I think.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
So we don't even have to say.
Oh.
It's an agreement, not an actual.
Yeah, you could leave out the install three.
Just leave it as agreement.
Generators, if you want. Could you do that? Oh. I should have more clarity, sorry.
No, I cheer motion. I think, uh, as long as you have that resolution in there and the resolution approves the agreement, I think you're okay. But I kinda like the clarity, so I'd probably put both.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay, I'll make an emotion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Wheeler Machinery to purchase and install three thirty-five twenty H natural gas generators at a price not to exceed eleven million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty-four cents.
Hey, I have a motion?
I'll second it.
It's a roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you so much.
That, that is long in coming, but needed, yeah, yeah, it's good, it's good.
Wish it was sooner than, you know, October.
Yeah, personally, I would like a line of about twelve of them. That's my personal opinion. We'll keep working on it. All right, thank you. Uh, any other items that need to be brought up? I have one quick question. I just wanna review and make sure we've got things on the work session that we talked about tonight that we're going to make sure we bring back. Um, what I've had to do with the property, the parking around the bike shop or something?
What was the curb?
Curb.
The design of the curb.
It's a reception center.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and I think we can talk about it the same if you want to. I think we, we pretty sent it back to Josh on the parking for the event center. And whatever he decides, I think that ought to be coming to us. But this other one, since we said we would talk about it, I think it's a good thing to do. Uh, one other thing that I don't think that we've had a review on, that's the fifth, fifth tax, the sales tax. I think we need to have that review, cause I need to tell MAG whether we're in or out. Uh, because that many comes to the county and the county has to say, you know, there has to be some commitment as to which direction we're going on it, so.
We did, didn't we?
I don't remember we did. If we, if we did, I don't remember.
Discussion. I don't remember if we had details on it.
But isn't that just us signing a, a resolution saying that we're in agreement with what they're doing?
Correct, we'll accept the money, yes, that will allow our citizens to be charged. I don't know. It's, this is really complicated in my brain, the fifth, fifth of a fifth of a fifth. Uh, the only fifth I know is whiskey, so that's, that's. So, but, but it is, it is us as a city agreeing that our citizens can be charged the extra point two zero, which half of it's going to the county for, uh, to be distributed, the other half is for transient, or transit, uh, items, so. Anyway, and it gets so split down by the legislation that, um, but that's the question really on the table, is whether we're wanting to, we'll agree to that or not, so.
And the projected number came out to be in, it was like half a million bucks more than that.
I don't know.
It was in a Friday.
And it's charged anyway.
It was in a Friday, no, from Troy.
Yeah, Troy sent it out, I don't remember off the top of my head. I wouldn't say it was like a hundred and seventy-five thousand or something a year. Maybe it was more than that.
I thought it was bigger, cause I was surprised, cause he told us originally it was gonna be about a hundred. And then it came out in the letter, he said it was like four, I wanna say four or five, but could be wrong.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're, yeah, I think we just need to make it.
We need to have a discussion.
We need to have a discussion and clarification. I know the county's chomping at the bit, uh, have me tell them, so.
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
There was another one that was timely, I thought, and that was, we were gonna have a discussion about our support of Salisbury's request for a liquor license.
Oh, let me bring you up to date on that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, thank you. So I, from the, the, the opinion and thoughts that everybody expressed, uh, I called Chris. And I said, Chris, um, we have to send a letter to the state anyway that says you're meeting all the requirements, all the zoning, all the, there's nothing that the city sees in this application that would make us oppose it. And I said, Chris, I think that's the letter you want. And he said, maybe. And I said, well, if it isn't, you need, just need to get with me. And he said, I'll get with our consultant, who's helping put this together and see if that will suffice. If not, I'll get with you. And I haven't heard from him. So I, we were willing, I think all of us were willing to say something more, if he needed something more to be said. But if we didn't need to, it wouldn't help him one way or the other. I didn't think there was a need for us to go through it, so.
When I met him, it was kind of timely when he had to have that in, so I was just worried if we were holding up.
No, no, I talked with him, uh, that night or the next morning and, and so, yeah. Anything else? Okay, go for it. Yeah, please.
Oh, come on, Craig. I'd like to make.
I'm motion to begin this meeting.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thanks, everybody.
You just need to be the winner every time.
We're having way too much fun down here.